Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's agenda forum on Wednesday the sixth of August two thousand and twenty five. And I declare the meeting open at six P M. Welcome to everyone in the gallery tonight and those watching at home. The city of Swan acknowledges the traditional custodians of this region, the Wajak people of the Ngunar nation, and their continuing connection to the land, waters and community. And we pay our respects to elders past, present and their descendants. The terms and the conditions of entry into this meeting are just posted at the entry as you came into the public gallery. Members of the public are advised to please read them and prior to attending this meeting and abide by them. Tonight's attendance and apologies, we have councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor Miles, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, deputy mayor Johnson and councillor Howlett. I have an apology from councillor Singh and councillor McCulloch. And councillor Oringo. The staff in attendance and we have. Councillor Brodovnik just entering the chamber now. We move to part four, which is decorations of financial and proximity interests and interests affecting impartiality. I have nil at this stage, but if any councillors do have one, could they please hand that up to the C E O? Tonight, part five and petitions, we have nil, excuse me, sorry, we have part five, which is petitions, we have nil tonight. Part six, reports and notices of motion, six point one is additional information from the offices, which there was nil. And we move to six point two, which is probably why most of you are here for deputations tonight or to listen to them. In accordance with current procedures for public participation at agenda forums, all requests for in-person deputations were required by six P M on Tuesday the fifth of August two thousand and twenty five. All written deputations received by three P M on Tuesday the fifth of August two thousand and twenty five were circulated with the preliminary agenda on Tuesday evening. This brings us to our first in-person deputation in support of the officer's recommendation fourteen point two point two, which is Binar's Futures, junior basketball program and request to change venue for wobble games, Mister Andrew Vlahov, O A M.
Okay, we'll just change that to Mister Tyrone Thwaites, he's the chief basketball officer at Basketball W A.
And you have five minutes, thank you. Or between both of you, so.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tyrone Thwaites, Chief Basketball Officer at Basketball W A. And I'm here to speak in support of Binar Basketball's application to use Swan Active Beach Borough as their home base for the West Australian Basketball League or wobble competition. Let me start by being completely transparent, Swan Active Midland does not meet the minimum facility court requirements to host wobble games. Under Basketball W A's wobble application procedure, venues must meet certain baseline criteria, some of which include a minimum of three full-sized compliant courts within the same venue, adequate runoff space between courts to ensure safety and compliance, and consistent Sunday access between March and September, which is essential to the viability of any wobble program. These requirements are not arbitrary, they're in place to ensure the quality, safety and competitiveness of our state's premier junior competition. Whilst Swan Active Midland does offer some excellent amenities and has had a wonderful upgrade, it simply does not meet those wobble facility standards. The court spacing in particular cannot be adjusted, meaning the venue will not be eligible to host wobble games now or into the foreseeable future. However, that doesn't make this conversation irrelevant, Binar Basketball is one of the most important emerging clubs in our sport. Deeply rooted in community, culturally grounded, and already making a significant impact in the lives of young Aboriginal and multicultural athletes. They are now fully affiliated with Basketball Western Australia and are progressing through the wobble application process with their submission due on the thirty first of August. Their intention is not to use Swan Active Midland as their wobble home venue. Importantly, Swan Active Beach Borough is the only option available to Binar for wobble inclusion. Binar's request to move to Beachborough is about ensuring they have a wobble compliant venue suitable for ensuring the development of the next generation of talent in the East Metro, embedded within the community that they serve. It allows them to prepare their athletes for competition in an environment that feels like home and that is built on culture and connection. As they grow and they will grow, Binar will require both venues to operate effectively, Beachborough for hosting wobble games and Swan Active Midland for community access training and off-court support. Basketball W A supports Binar's wobble plan. We see enormous potential in this club and we see this partnership with the city as a vital part of making that potential real, not just for a few athletes, but for a whole region of young people who deserve access to a state-level basketball pathway. Basketball W A views Binar Basketball as the key affiliated association for this underserved region for basketball in Metro Perth. Thank you for considering their proposal and for supporting the role the sport complains, shaping stronger, more connected communities. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mister Thwaites, and we'll just move to Mister Vlahov.
Not unlike the Juneau Up Wolves, the Warwick Senators, the Perry Lakes Hawks, the Perth Redbacks, the Kalamunda Suns, the Hills Raiders. So now Midland, which hasn't had a competition here of this standard for twenty-three years, we're now at the cusp of that. The sticking point is the venue. So Swan Active, as much as we love that as our home, does not have enough FIBA compliant courts, according to Basketball W A, in order for us to progress to wobble inclusion. So it's imperative that we are able to access Swan Active Beach Borough in order for the kids here to take the next step. And we are asking for your support and understanding that this is a fairly straightforward and rudimentary process. We have an agreement with with the city and it's going fantastically well and we want to see that agreement grow, not only through longevity, but engagement. And this is the direct pathway to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mister Vlahov. I'll just ask, councillors, are there any questions for Mister Thwaites or Mister Vlahov? Councillor Bowman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to the deputation. Andrew, I'm trying to get my head around the fact that with all the expertise that was behind it previously two years ago, that we're only now finding out that the courts aren't compliant. What went wrong?
Boggles the mind, doesn't it?
It does. So, in a nutshell.
Just get you to pop that microphone on again.
I'm very sorry. In a nutshell, when we were awarded the rights to manage the competition, City of Swan and Swan Active were in the middle of a renovation. We didn't know what the outcome exactly of that was, it was kept under wraps. However, the the courts haven't changed. New courts, yes, spacing, no, no structural differences were incorporated. It's a beautiful facility, it's certainly sufficient for training and community basketball when, but when you need to take the next step up, which is compliant with other venues, it does not fit the bill. We have two courts that are, two that are not. However, you need a minimum of three and Beach Borough provides that.
So my next question is, when there was deputations two years ago, we were told about the importance of Midland, the connection with Midland. How does that now work when you're wanting to move your wobble games to Beachborough?
Sorry.
That's okay, it's just for the recording.
No, 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 no problem. It's, we belong to the entire eastern corridor. If you looked at the map back when we made the presentation, our local, the nearest local wobble clubs, Hills Raiders, Kalamunda Suns and East Perth. So there is a massive area under which Binar now is the affiliate association and the only club that's putting forward the wobble submission. So it's not just about Midland, it's about the entire city of Swan.
And final question, and then I've got questions for staff later on. Do you realise and understand obviously the difference when you're requesting Midland? Midland had been shut down, so no groups and that were impacted at that stage. But the proposal here will see a number of Sunday users being pretty well thrown out. So are you aware of that?
Sorry, yes, we are aware and we submitted our our application to the city. They've now done, as I understand it, a comprehensive report, their support here of it. There no doubt is some displacement, but in terms of, if you wanted to call it cost benefit analysis, I think it weighs very strongly in our favour. And the opportunity for those that are Sunday users at Beach Borough to transfer to Swan Active is definitely there.
But surely, yeah, surely you would not think that's fair. Do you think that's fair for for users who have been regularly using Alton to be thrown out or be told to go to, they can go to Midland, with some of those being ten Ks further the other way for one club to take over that venue?
Sorry, councillor, I'll probably disagree with your language, we're not throwing anybody out. We're providing a very positive alternative to the community. We as a as a club that have been on this journey now with the city, we were very keen to stay at Swan Active if that was possible. Turned out it wasn't. We've now realised that this is the only way forward and we would be as accommodating as possible for any displaced clubs. So we're not trying to throw anybody out, we're just trying to provide the opportunity for what we believe is a very well-needed service in the community.
Thank you. I had a question from deputy mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, my question carries on from something that councillor Bowman raised. And that is when this was first presented to us, it was presented as a something that would be of special interest or a special, if you like, service or opportunity for the demographic in Midland. And I'm thinking that maybe some of those people who would have liked to have participated in this in Midland might not have transport to get themselves to Beachborough. So I'm just wondering, have you got any plans to assist people who may already be interested in taking part in this in Midland to actually get to Beachborough to participate?
The answer is absolutely yes. We already provide transport assistance to a number of young families that sit outside the Swan Active area that doesn't sit on a trans-Perth line. Where Binar is a very community-led organisation, we have recently acquired a new van to help in that transportation process. But yes, we will definitely help any child that needs transportation from the Midland area to Beachborough to participate, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And my second question actually is to Mister Mister Thwaites. I'm just wondering, to what extent are the courts in Midland not compliant? Is it like they're ten percent not compliant, fifty percent not compliant? What's the runoff? How bad is the lack of runoff?
When we when we refer to the, it's less about the runoff and it's the distance between the courts in particular that are not safe enough. They're, I think from memory, I couldn't tell you the exact amount, they're probably half a metre, if not a little bit bigger than that. I'd say most of our venues, generally speaking, between courts are anywhere from three to five metres between all of our courts.
Okay, so I guess the question is, what's the standard?
The the minimum standard is somewhat subjective. It would be one that we would make a determination on on if you had, say, under eighteen boys running up and down that court at wobble level, would it, what would be the most suitable standard? Look, from our point of view, we could probably get away from, with at least two or three metres. Would be, anything less than two or three metres would not be suitable. And to be honest, I haven't seen any venues of that serve that level of standard, that we would allow anything less than a metre in that space.
I guess this raises a question, if there's no actual standard, how can you tell Binar that they can't use Midland as a location?
We would need to make sure all of our courts are FIBA compliant and I'm happy to refer council to the FIBA standards as it relates to courts.
So what's what's FIBA? Is it FIBA or FEMA? Sounds like.
FIBA.
So do FIBA have standards for different, for distances between courts?
They generally provide advice, that's correct. Off the top of my head, I cannot tell you specifically what they are. Because what we would often do at a, when you're talking about representative competition, we use those as a guide and we know that every single venue in Western Australia is slightly different. And when you're dealing with different venues, we're going to assess every venue from a safety point of view on their merits. And on a, generally speaking, half a metre between courts, which we know, understand obviously can't shift, the distance between courts, is not safe for wobble athletes running up and down there, particularly when you have two games going on side by side.
Okay, so what we're hearing is there are no actual fixed criteria for a determination that it's unsafe, it's just a matter of opinion. So I guess, I guess the next question is, if, I'll ask the staff a question later. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Vlahov.
The FIBA dimensions are spelled out internationally, you can Google it straight away. O C health and safety, okay, when you're talking about spectators potentially being in place, is a two-metre minimum between courts.
Thank you very much. I had councillor Howlett first.
Thank you, and thank you for your deputations. I have a question for both of you, so you might as well both stay there. Along with councillor Bowman, Mister Vlahov, you are basketball royalty. I'm surprised that you would not have known what the W A B L requirements were and that you perhaps might not have been able to work with staff to understand that earlier. But that aside, you mentioned that potentially two courts might meet the requirements and we've got four courts there and you really need three. Is there any way of adjusting the existing court system?
The short answer is, appreciate your comment, thank you very much. We did make this a well-known. I think the the FIBA minimums are global. When the renovation happened at Swan Active, we were not, we were not given detail as to what was going to happen with the basketball courts. So when it re. So, when it reopened and we went same four courts, problem with three and four, one and two are fine. Works for community basketball, but when we take the next level up and potentially with the level and standard that we are aspiring to here in Midland, on the City of Swan, it does not fit the criteria that, that we need in order to receive a wobble licence. So, there are conditions precedent, just like, you know, you don't play the grand final of the AFL at Fremantle Oval, it's too small, et cetera. You need compliant courts. And so, where our optionality was, do we just fold up our tents and go home or do we seek an alternative? Beach Borough is a viable alternative. And not respecting your comments, Sarah, around displacing people, there is a degree of displacement and perhaps adjustment over time that needs to happen. We're happy to work with any group in that space. But coming into the, coming to them, absolutely, I was aware of what required. But what we got delivered at Swan Active post renovation and opening is not up to standard.
Okay, thank you. One of the conditions of that council resolution was that it was subject to Binna future successfully obtaining the wobble licence, which I guess was never really going to happen if our courts were not going to match.
Correct.
I suppose that was discovered subsequent. Tyrone, did I hear you say that both, both centres might be required? Swan Active Midland for training and Swan Active Beach Borough for the games?
It was more the point, yeah, correct, but that was more the point, not so much for wobble, that was a continuation of, of Binna's already good activity from a domestic and, and training and programming point of view was more what I was referring to. But I presume they would still use Swan Active Midland for the purpose of, of training for their wobble teams, would be my expectation, but Andrew can probably speak to that.
Okay, I'll explore that with staff a bit later. And I've got one last question, and that is with the Cook Government's reelection promise of a $12 million funding to Binna for a basketball centre slash hub, I don't know the correct term to use. Hopefully that, you know, will go ahead for you because that would be exciting. Will that be built to wobble standards and if so, is it expected that you would then transfer out of a Swan Active facility to this new centre?
Absolutely, number one, absolutely will be built to wobble standard and FIBA standard so that we can host the Australian team for training camps. We're in discussion with wheelcats for wheelchair basketball. There is a whole range of exciting opportunities for a facility like that. And when you've got the opportunity to build from the ground up a greenfield site, we're now into a whole range of consultations around what's going to be required. We know the demand for indoor courts, for instance, in West Australia is through the roof. Tyrone can speak to that, but I know for instance in this area alone, that facility will be full. Swan Active will be full, Beach Borough will be full. Basketball is the most, was the fastest growing sport in the country by, by, by country mile.
Any further questions? No. Councillor Henderson?
Thank you, and congratulations on what you guys are doing, going fantastic. But I want to get a couple of pointed questions. When Midland was being redeveloped, were you consulted about the requirements specifically?
No. No, we're not.
Did you offer any suggestions about what your needs would be?
Well, we weren't consulted.
Yeah, the other, I was flipping around the other way as, as opposed to you writing them letters or whatever. Okay, I really wanted to get down to whether or not you had an opportunity to.
To be, to be frank, when we knew that there was a renovation to happen, we weren't given much detail as to what. We knew that there were going to be upgraded aquatic facilities, et cetera. To be honest, my expectation was that there was a no brainer to maybe build two more courts as a minimum, given demand. But constraints on, on capex, et cetera. This, it is what it is. At the end of the day, we're not, we're not unhappy, like, we, we love Swan Active Midland. It's our spiritual home. But in order for us to progress through to the next level and provide that pathway for children in this area, we need to move to Beach Borough for Sundays.
Further question? Councillor Bowman?
Just one final question. Andrew, you said that it'd be a no brainer, you thought that they should have built two more. So, if for a situation was arise where this local government was looking at building a new facility and had four courts with two courts for future development, would you be saying it'd be a no brainer that we should be building them now?
And again, I, I can hand on heart say economically, it's a no brainer. The cost of construction these days, for what I understand, was a $31 or $2 million investment into Swan Active that did not cater additional courts. I find that, again, just personally hard to believe. However, if you were to do that, we would support it 100%. And likewise, when we get to the next element of our design phase for our new hub, we would love to come and share it with you because we, we see such an important partnership with the City of Swan over the next 25 or 50 years in terms of what we're trying to do, that we'd love to share it with you. And I know we've gone beyond our five minutes, but.
Thank you very much. Councilors, are there any further questions for the gentleman? No, thank you both very much for your deputations tonight.
Thank you for your talk.
If you've got further questions, we'll have a section for councillors to ask staff.
Correct.
Thank you. And now we move to 14.3.1, which is the proposed educational establishment in Ellenbrook, DA 825/2025. And we have in-person deputations not in support of the officer's recommendation. Mr. Phil Idell, Strata manager for the owners of the survey Strata Plan 36465. Good evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. Yes, we're not in support of the application that's been put through primarily on traffic issues and parking. The Strata complex that's out there is a mixed-use complex of residential and business. And that particular building that's, you know, looking for the change in use, started off as a vet with a beauty salon above it and then there was a, a church next to it. And now they're wanting to turn it into a school, basically. There's a limited number of car parking spaces within the Strata complex and they're used by the existing businesses within the scheme and the residents as well. On a typical Monday, there's very few free parking spaces available. And there's been tra- traffic issues in the past. There's a childcare centre there that has drop-off and pick-up at, you know, nine and three type of times and even later, depending upon circumstance. And there's been in the past some issues with that and safety issues as well around the users. So, it's not that we're against the general principles of what the applicant stands for in terms of their schooling, it's more the suitability. If they're taking the parking from the current people that are using it, what are the current people that are using it going to do for parking? Especially seeing as how they are, those parks are designed for, or the overflow that they're looking for is for the staff of that school and not for their clients. And it's a significant issue and all of the people within the Strata, or the big majority of them, are against it for that reason. It's a safety issue primarily and also a fairness issue. You give, give parking to one people, one set of people, what are the rest of them going to do? I do have the chairman of the council of owners with me tonight as well. I dragged him along, not so much kicking and screaming. But then there's also another lot owner who's asked to make a presentation as well tonight. So, I think it's a case of fit for purpose. That Strata scheme is not fit for the purpose that the applicant has put forward. There's lots of other things within that application, but that's the key thing. Happy to take any questions if there are.
Thank you very much, Mr. Idell. Councillor Bowman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Phil. Phil, I know the area quite well because obviously before all those uses, there was also the sales office back in the day there as well, which I happened to camp out to try and get a block when, that's what you had to do. But, Phil, can you explain to councillors the, the traffic or the road on that corner at the moment? Because obviously it's gone through a few changes over the years. And also your observations of where cars may have ended up at different times, please?
So, there's a, there's an intersection of Coolamon Boulevard and Mornington Parkway. And there's been at least one, two occasions where cars have been speeding down one or other road and lost it and ended up in that particular building. And done quite extensive damage. And, you know, fires have resulted and, you know, you name it, and injury. And then, as I say, the street or the road that's, the parking is on, that's nominated in the applicants, in the application, is actually within the Strata company's boundaries. It's not public parking, it's not a public road, but it's within the council bound, within the Strata company boundaries.
Phil, that leads me to my next question. Obviously, it's the Strata company, so the Strata owns those car parking bays.
That's correct.
Are they actually allocated to individual businesses or is it just there's 42 or 46 car parking bays and if one business wants to use all of them, well, that's bad luck for the others?
Well, that, they are not allocated at this point in time. We've never, never gone to that extent. Because some of the businesses have actually worked within the boundaries of their own lots to create parking for their staff. And therefore, any people, I mean, there's a medical centre up there and as you can imagine, the medical centre is quite busy. The staff park within their boundaries, their patients park either on the street or in the car parks that are available for their use. Yeah, because they're dealing with a member of the Strata company, yeah.
And next question, Phil, I just wanted to mention, there's probably about 20 accidents that I know of at this area from different times. You touched on it before, the childcare, and back in the day, I remember there was a playgroup there where my kids were, didn't answer back to me. But with, with the childcare, can you explain what goes on between roughly about eight o'clock and eight thirty, maybe nine o'clock in the morning with the parking or the drop-off for those childcare's? And the reason I ask that is because in the report, that's going to be the peak time for the teachers and everyone else coming to the school.
That's, that's correct. If, at those sort of times, there's a big flow of traffic through that back area. And people have, if there's available parking, they'll pull in and then discharge their child, go to childcare centre, go back. But sometimes there's so much traffic that you don't have the opportunity to park. But if there's no parking because it's been taken up, then it reduces that capacity, yeah.
Further question, councillor Bowman? Councilors, are there any further questions for Mr. Idell? Thank you very much for coming in tonight and for your deputation.
I am willing to answer any further questions at any point.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll ask Mr. Hujing Lee, or Ken, come up and give his deputation, please. You have three minutes, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hao Jiang Li, you can call me Ken, my surname's Lee. Sorry, I got a very strong accent, so English is my second language. But I will try my best to make my voice clear in English. So, yeah, so I'm here to express an objection to changing the Coolamon Boulevard 40, 42 and 44 to, into a college. Here's my paper. I actually, I got about 15 people to sign on as a supporter. They are the residents living in the Strata area, like me, myself. So, everyone don't want a college opening up there. Yeah, where most of them, I don't know. But I just lock on their door, try my luck one by one to say, I'm going to do this to the council tonight. Everyone sign on and supporting me. All right, at the beginning, I would like to emphasise, yeah, that area is part of the Strata plan. So, any change of, of the use, any blocks should be discussed and passed in our Strata owners first in a meeting. But something's happening. The college has been set up a office for a while there, maybe months already. And recently they bring more their cars, like two minivans if they're college local. So, I found we, I have to, I have to do something. Even I have, I'm speaking broken English, I have to stand up. I'm not sure, something happened. So, without discuss with our property owners in the Strata. Yeah, however, sorry, I'm a bit nervous today.
You're doing well, keep going.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll be locked, okay, I'll come. All right. Yeah. So, our views of the, every property owners in the Strata plan should not be ignored and bypassed for certain business or anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I keep going, please?
That is the three minutes. Did you have much more?
I got some reasons to explain. I've got three reasons to support my point of view, something like this.
They're very quick.
Okay, yep, certainly. Yeah, so there will be traffic jams, like at the school, at the area, every morning should be always the traffic jams. I am a father of two childrens, so with traffic jams on that there, I, I believe I will wear a hat to drive out to bring my kids out to that area to drop to school. Secondly, you know, that when the colleges are running, there will be more around teenagers, other people in that area. You know, teenagers have been issue everywhere. But I'm not saying they're all bad, but we don't want to face this issue more, issue like teenager issue around that area. And then there ought to be enough car ping, car park, I believe, parking bays for everyone. Once they open, they will getting at least more and more. And they say maybe another 17 car park they will occupy. So, there will be traffic jams or when they circle around looking for car path, so more traffic will created. If you go parking, like people have to park on the verges and the lawns as well. So, will endanger the people because it will create a lot more traffic when people circle around looking for parking.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we've got the first question from councillor Bowman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee, the three properties that the, wanting, the applicants wanting to put the school in, are they part of the, the Strata block?
Yep, I believe so.
And they, they are bound by the Strata rules?
I'm not the property manager, I'm in the Strata manager. So, I believe, yep, certainly, that are included the Strata plan.
And, and if you want to make major changes to your property, do you have to go through the Strata?
Yep, certainly. I will, I will discuss with our Strata manager first to change the use. Like from residential to commercial or you change the, other uses of property, yeah.
And can you advise me, because you're out there every day?
No, I'm not, I'm a five-four worker.
Oh, so you're out there every now and then? Is Indy, is Indy College up and running already?
In my, our plan? Yeah, there's a college not, not running, I'm not sure they're running. But there, there's an office, there are workers in the office. But they're already to, recently they're bringing two, two their cars with their locals, the minivans.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Lee, my question is about the document that you showed us that you said was signed by, I think 15 Strata owners or residents in the block. I think that might be a petition, Madam Mayor. So, I'm wondering, Mr. Lee, if you think that is a petition, you can submit it to this council and then it can be heard.
I'm also handing this copy to. I'll hand this copy to.
Uh, it may not be in the exact format for a petition, but I mean, given, given the fact that, you know, as Mr. Lee has said.
We have a set, um, set format for submitting those petitions. But we can ask staff to have a look for you and we can advise whether it's in the format.
Um, if, if I may, um, Madam Mayor, um, if Mr. Lee provides me with the document, I can have that put into.
Thank you very much.
An appropriate form and put in on behalf of the Strata Company.
Then we could accept it. That would be great. Thank you.
So then.
And just to clarify on councillor Bowman's question, yes, those three properties are required to comply with all of the. Um, bylaws of the, uh, Strata Company.
Okay. Do you have a question, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, my question is a procedural one. In order to assist Mr. Lee, uh, he is supposed to submit his petition tonight. But on this occasion, given the circumstances, would it be acceptable for him to submit it at some later time? As he has given notice that he wishes to submit a petition.
That's what we just discussed, is that it's be submitted in the proper performer. So he is able to then. Mr. CEO?
But he can submit it tomorrow, the day after, or the day after that.
That's what we've just discussed, that he'll, he'll be assisted to.
It's a petition, yes. Well, petitions are supposed to be submitted tonight, and I'm trying to get an exception for him.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And in accordance with our meeting procedures, four point clause four point four petitions. Subsection three, where required petition must comply with any form prescribed by the act or other written laws. So we'd need to see that the petition complied with the format required by council. And as noted, petitions are required to be presented to an agenda forum. If it's presented tonight, simply staff will have a look at it and see how it might be complied with. However, there's nothing stopping Mr. Lee just circulating that information to council members for their information. And not have it considered as a petition, because a petition would require a separate report back. But as you're going to decide on this matter next week, the simplest thing to do is simply circulate the information to council members. Because we wouldn't be able to identify then to address the name of the address individuals. So it would be easier for us to circulate that to council.
Uh, the best, the best process for this at this stage would be to, um, discuss with the staff. Because we don't have any addresses of those supporter names at this stage. So we'll get you to work with staff so that we can format it, and then it'll be able to be, um, submitted next week. Okay. Councillor Bowman?
Madam Mayor, just, just a, a point and a question. Uh, councillor Johnson's right. Uh, we are dealing with this item at next week's meeting, so it would be normally a petition beforehand. So I see it probably not relevant for them to go away and put it in the format after the facts. But can we ensure that is circulated to staff? Obviously, it doesn't meet the petition requirement. But it obviously shows, uh, that there's a number of people in that area that aren't happy. And if we take the point that they were from door knocking, uh, in the area. Um, I'm pretty sure that will give councillors an indication of the concerns when we consider it next week, if that's possible, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, that's what we're initiating, is that we're asking. And Mr. Adele has offered to go back and help format that and possibly get the addresses as well. And work with staff to, staff to get that in the proper performer in a timely manner so we can submit it next week. Oh, before, sorry. They'll submit it in the next couple of days when he can send it through. Mr. CEO?
Through the chair, as noted, can't submit the petition to council outside the process. The document I have here doesn't comply with the formatting requirements, doesn't identify clearly the names and the addresses. So therefore, you could verify their, their residence in City of Swan. However, as I might mention, there's nothing stopping us just simply providing a copy of this to all council members. To show that it's Mr. Lee's, that tonight there are people who, when he sought their views, uh, didn't support what was proposed. And I presume these are clients of his business.
Councillor Bowman?
And a, and a follow-up question, Madam Mayor, and I think the CEO sort of touched on it. There'd be nothing stopping the two people that made deputations tonight to provide an email to all councillors. To actually tell us who those people are or their addresses as well. Uh, it still doesn't form a petition, but we'd be getting all the same information that we would get in a petition as well. So there's nothing stopping them from doing that.
If they're happy to do so. Thank you, councillor Bowman. Uh, councillor Howlett? Oh, you had a question? No, councillor Howlett?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, this is for Phil or Ken. And it's, might be an obvious question, but just confirming that the, it relates to the Strata. So the owners of those three units is Indy Education, or are they lease holding those units?
The owners of that, um, building, those three buildings are Indy Education.
And are you aware of when they purchased those and became members of the, took on the Strata responsibilities?
Last year, I can't remember the exact date. It was last year. And, um, yeah. Up to the time that the application went to, uh, council and then was put out for, um, public comment. We'd had no approach from anybody about the application and what they were planning on doing. And, you know, so we gave, we had, we'd given no opportunity to provide input to the application. Or those making the reports that formed a part of the application. And even when the application had been received, there was no approach by the, the council, the City of Swan. To the Strata Company. There was, obviously, the, um, letters went out to, um, you know, residents. Uh, or, or landowners, huh? But there was nothing to the actual Strata Company.
And just a follow-up question, do, um, other units that are on, part of that, um, Strata plan. Are they all commercial buildings?
No, some are, I was just doing a bit of a tot up in my head. There's one, two, three, four. Those, those three plus five or six others that are commercial. The rest are, um, residences. So there's twenty-six individual, um, lots, so to speak. And some of them have been combined, huh? But there is a significant number of residences.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, you had a question?
Uh, I don't think it's necessary, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any further questions? For other gentleman? No? Thank you both again very much for coming in and giving your deputation tonight. Move to fourteen point three point two, which is the proposed amendment number two, three, five to local planning scheme number seventeen. To insert car park as an additional use on lot six, number two, Tanner Street in Middle Swan. So we have an in-person deputation in support of the officer's recommendation from Mr. Joe Algeri, Altus Planning. Thank you, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, good evening, elected members, staff and members of the gallery. Um, as you correctly said, I'm here to support the officer recommendation. My firm, Altus Planning, prepared the request for the scheme to be amended. So that a car park application can be considered. Um, here with me tonight is the owner of the land, number two Tanner Street. And the adjoining property, which is number seven Great Northern Highway, Mr. Milan Mutanovic. And I'm happy to report that the Corner Butcher Shop, um, at number seven. Will soon finally be reopening again after extensive period of refurbishments. When Milan approached me about the, um, proposition of putting a car park. He was unaware that the current zoning wouldn't allow for the car park. And I looked at it, I had meetings with council staff and thought it was an application of merit. When I took up the discussion on the fact that the scheme amendment, should it be initiated by you this evening? Needs to be advertised. I said, um, it would be helpful if we had some sort of plan. For the council and the community to look at at that time. And he said, oh, but we've already done one. And in fact, they went to a landscape architect and, um, not only does it show a car park, but it shows public seating, barbecue facilities. Um, a pergola type, uh, structure made out of a seat container. And I said, um, Milan, these things go beyond a car park. But they do, in my mind, illustrate your commitment to make this more than just. Let's squeeze as many bays as we can and no landscaping whatsoever. Uh, in retrospect, I should have got him to, um, to change that or we come up with a different concept. Because I want to make sure that all of you are aware that all you're doing tonight. Is potentially initiating a process so that a car park can be considered. But then, should that amendment be successful, it still requires a standalone and specific development application. That development application will then determine the number and the position of any crossovers. The number and the layout of individual car bays and driveways. The extent and form of any landscaping. All of those things get dealt with at development stage. But we can't do the whole thing in one foul swoop unless we first amend the scheme. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone is comfortable with that. And I can assure you that the, Milan is under no apprehension. That approval of amendment gives him as a right approval of that concept. So that's all I had to say. Um, otherwise, we wholly endorse the officer recommendation. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Algeri. Uh, councillor Bowman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Joe. Joe, you mentioned the butcher shop's been closed for a while. How long's it been closed for?
I don't know, because I've only been involved in this, uh, particular.
More than twelve months?
Um, yes, yeah, yeah.
Um, and why's, what's the need for extra parking?
It's, I've dug up a lot of history on, on the store. Um, it has got a limited amount of parking at the rear. It's got non-conforming use rights. I would dare say that an equivalent facility with the same floor area under contemporary scheme requirements. Would probably require a lot more car parking bays than are being provided there. There's also the, the singular, um, crossover to Great Northern Highway. A more contemporary development would probably have, um, multiple crossovers or an in and out. So it's simply to support, um, the operations of the, uh, the, the butcher store. It's not in any way tied to any intended expansion. Whatever conditions were applied to that last refurbishment would still be, um, applicable to the operations.
So am I correct that more parking bays means you expect more customers?
Uh, hopefully, and less congestion, uh, congestion and a safer, potentially a safer way to get in and out of the premises.
So, Joe, final question, and you're a planning guru, and you mentioned it's a non-conforming use. Would you see this as increasing a non-conforming use? And if not, if not, why not?
Uh, no, because, uh, that, those refurbishments, um, they've got obviously conditions. The difficulty with non-conforming, uh, uses is that the time that they were first established. Uh, they had very little in the way of conditions or parameters set to them. Um, if any business is successful, you can't stop customers coming to that premises. And that's when there is problems with congestion, illegal parking on verges. I, I see this as a positive in terms of, uh, the ability of for, for more customer parking.
Further question? No. Councillor Howlett?
Thank you. Um, is Milan available to speak with? May I ask him a question? Thank you. Um, that site's been a butcher shop for a very long time. And it was a really well-regarded butcher shop. And in the days when I used to, um, eat meat, I really, I used to visit there. They had a great little butcher shop. Um, and what you've done to that building is, is really complemented. The development that's happening in that vibe Ash Middle Swan area. Um, and I've enjoyed watching it grow and change as my, live in, live in the area. Um, but my question is, why has it taken so long to get this refurbishment done?
Uh, a number of things. Thank you for the questions and good evening, everyone. Um, well, once COVID hit was one of the biggest downfalls with trades and supplies and, um, few hurdles with them. And we just chopped and changed with a few people and it's just taken a little bit extra than what I thought it would have taken.
And just a subs, a follow-up question. Um, there's a bit of an institution in, um, sort of. Bayswater, Bassandine, Ashfield called Don's Smoke Meets. You may know of Don's. It seems that from the images you provided, which were very pleasing, that you have a broader vision for that area. What sort of scope are you looking at? Because it's taken you quite some time to get where you are now. Um, and it, it looks that you've presented a vision that you've got for the future. Have you got some sort of scope in that?
Not really. I, I'd more like to see like a more of a community vibe more than anything. Um, definitely not for something for people be queuing up down the road, which would be probably nice just to come in the shop. But not for, um, low and slow or anything like that at the front.
Councillors, are there any further questions? Deputy Mayor?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I see from page two ninety-seven that there's a tree on the site. If the, um, site is turned into a car park, will the tree be retained?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Councillors, any further questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming in for your deputations and answering those questions. We move to six point three, which is councillor questions in regard to items on the agenda. Councillors, are there any questions? Councillor Bowman?
I'll go with this one first and then, uh, let others. Um, through you, Madam Mayor, to the acting, uh, exec director. Uh, can you advise us, uh, what the rules are with a non-conforming use? And in particular, when a non-conforming use stops for a period of time, what is supposed to happen?
Mr. Russell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Uh, the scheme stipulates that a local government may take the view. That a non-conforming use has expired or ceased, um, or it's, it's, it's expired. If the use has ceased for a period greater than six months.
My next question, Madam Mayor, through to either one. Uh, what does the scheme say about increasing a non-conforming use?
Mr. Russell?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. Um, the scheme says in increasing a, a non-conforming use right. You follow a process of, um, of advertising. The scheme also more particularly talks about certain specific criteria in terms of a change of a non-conforming use. From one non-conforming use to another, where the criteria is a lot tighter. And it indicates that it must be closer to the intent of the zoning than the existing non-conforming use. So if you're going from one to the other, the one that you're going to needs to be more consistent with the zoning, uh, objectives of the particular zone. Um, and have a lesser impact on the character and amenity of the particular locality. Uh, in this instance, that's for a change, that those particular criteria don't apply to an expansion of a non-conforming use.
Further question?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So, uh, am I correct that because the butcher shop hasn't been open for quite a while? That actually hasn't got planning approval, uh, to operate as a butcher shop, because that is a residential zone? And the, the non-conforming use has now been extinguished?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I wouldn't put it so. Um, there's case law around this and it ultimately might be a legal question. But the closure of a shop for renovations for a period with an intention to reopen is not the same, in my opinion. Certainly, there might be case law on this as a complete cessation, uh, and departure of that business from the site. So merely a closure for renovation, at least in my opinion, I don't think would qualify as a cessation of the use for the purposes of the scheme.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, uh, should I keep going or the same one? Okay, uh, if we can go on to fourteen point two point two, and I expect there'll be quite a few questions there. Um, Madam Mayor, first thing is, I submitted already a number of questions. Any chance I can actually have those questions in particular, some of them that haven't been answered and deviated around the subject. Uh, answered, and I'll, I'll go into some examples. Uh, my first question, page one twenty-five states. There will be some bookings potentially impacted. What are the impacts and to who? And the response was, this is covered on page one twenty-six, impacts of other users. Well, yes, I know, I know who they are. What's, what's the impact? So are, are we throwing out, are we throwing out, uh, seven, eight users? And if we're not throwing out, what are we doing?
Mr. Bishop?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first of all, I don't agree with the characterisation that we're throwing anyone out. Uh, as per the report, what we have done is we've engaged with six current regular user groups on the Sunday. As per the report, what we have done is we've engaged with six current regular user groups on the Sunday in the Swan Active Beachborough courts. And we've explained to them what the proposal is and how it may impact them and how we would endeavor to work with them in regards how we could relocate, support them to operate at different times. The reason why we think that's possible is basically from our direct engagement with them. The number of attendees are generally attending those groups in the order of twelve to twenty people. So smaller groups, which we have greater opportunity to relocate, facilitate. Also, the season runs from April to September and will be a home and away program. So there will be availability at other times of the year and also on some Sundays as well. If there's more specific information desired, we can certainly provide that on notice.
Thank you. Counsel Bowman, a further question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, if we're not throwing them out, but we're telling them that if this goes ahead, they can't use the facility on a Sunday, what do staff call that?
Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When any group books a facility, it's not a guarantee in perpetuity that forever, henceforth, they have a booking for the use of that facility. Obviously, we avoid any disruption if we can and for lots of reasons, whether it be specific events that may occur, we sometimes have to move bookings. We often have issues obviously with maintenance or closure periods, no different to when we had to refurbish Swan Active Midland and Beachborough in the past. When such events occur or water leaks or whatever, we have to work with groups to look to see if we can find alternative arrangements with them. And generally, most are happy to work with us.
So follow-up question to that, Madam Mayor, is, yes, I understand when something happens and there's damage to the building and all that. So an issue's happened. But am I correct that one group is being proposed by staff to have priority of a venue exclusively the courts on a Sunday over five, six groups that are currently using it? Is that what it is? Because I'm pretty sure we have a policy on who gets to use facilities as well.
Mr. Bishop.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we are proposing that and we are recommending to that. Ultimately, it's a council decision, no different to the decision we bought when bought to council, when Binar approached us about using Swan Active Midland as well. There are reasons in the report, particularly in regards their participation rates, the type of community they target, the community development programs, youth development programs. But ultimately, it is a valid decision in regards to benefits of that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I thank the director for offering to, if there's any further information that we require, I'll refer him to my question five. And that question was the consultation with the impacted user groups from Elton on Sunday that staff are throwing out or relocating for six months of the year. And I asked about specific details of the consultation together with the responses provided by the group. And I got told that was covered in page one twenty-six and one twenty-seven. So based on the exec director's previous comments, will I be able to, and if other councillors also, get the correspondence that the other six groups did? And the reason I'm asking that is I believe not all of them are happy, at least one that reached out to me.
Mr. Bishop.
Yep, through you, Madam Mayor. Absolutely. We can provide further details on the consultations occurred with those six groups.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up question to that, making sure they weren't all just verbal. Let's have a chat. And it was actually something provided in writing or received back in writing?
I'm sure staff will assist there. Thank you. Are there further questions?
Yeah, I've got quite a few, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, why do we not consult, and in this example, the redevelopment of what was sixteen million and ended up being thirty-six million or something like that? And please, councillors, correct me if I'm wrong, if my figures are wrong, with those potential users to make sure that we're spending money on a facility that is fit for purpose?
Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when we were approached by Binar for the proposal to use Swan Active Midland for their community club program, the scope design of this facility, the refurbishment of Swan Active Midland was already committed to. When they came to us, it was always their expression that this was an interim solution until they find their own facility that's purpose-built to meet their needs. Binar did make it absolutely clear that ultimately they wanted to enter a competition in the wobble competition. And at that point, our assumptions were, and this is, you know, open and transparent, our assumptions were that the courts would be filing for wobble use because it'd been used for wobble use in the past, for wobble competition in the past. It was only further on, after they'd set up and started working and operating out of Swan Active Midland, that did they start to engage to get their license to enter into the wobble competition? And did then, when Basketball WA, the authorizing authority for a license to compete in that competition, when they come out, do their risk assessment, et cetera? Did it become apparent that the court dimensions, the nature of the facility wouldn't be suitable for that sort of level of professional competition?
Madam Mayor, my next question, I think they were called Midland Mustangs or something, weren't they, back in the day? When they were playing there. When did the changes, when did the changes occur to the requirements? And it follows on from Counsel Johnson's question. Because obviously it complied previously. The courts, we've been told, haven't changed. So obviously the rules of compliance have. Have we got details of when that changed, please?
Mr. Bishop.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'd have to take that on notice. I don't know when it changed. But like you said, it was also, their intention was always in the future to go to a wobble competition and also to go to their own facility. But yeah, we can certainly provide more information on that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, my next question, when we look in the application, was a fifteen thousand dollar expense for the shot clock. And I asked the question, who was paying for it? And it was basically staff were saying they were going to do it from the extra revenue we're getting. I'm not sure how we work out that extra revenue. But Madam Mayor, obviously they'd need electric shot clock for if they were going to be and could be operating at Midland. Were we going to provide for the shot clock there? And if we did, is that in the budget?
Mr. Bishop, if you're able to advise.
Again, through you, Madam Mayor. No, going backwards from the last part of the question. No, we didn't consider the need for a shot clock, a shot clock when we did Swan Active Midland for the same reasons. We just weren't aware until we got further down the process and a license was applied for and the details of what you need to have in place for Basketball WA became clear. It has been identified that that would be needed to be established at Swan Active Beachborough for the wobble competitions. It's not fifteen thousand. It's actually, I think, seventeen and a half thousand in the report. However, we have sufficient minor capital budget that we can, existing budget, that we can facilitate that. The reason we're suggesting that that's okay is that we do anticipate to obviously generate some additional revenue from this. Yes, it will take a couple of years, but that's the rationale.
Madam Mayor, my last question on this, and I've got questions on other items, but I'll let the other councillors have a chance. The increased costs, I got told somewhere that they'll be able to be offset by extra revenue. And one of those examples was the cafe. Can I confirm, is the cafe now making a profit and it's not losing money, which it has been in previous years past?
Mr. Bishop, thanks.
I'll take that on notice, Madam Mayor, and get the exact figures on that.
Thank you. I'll ask other councillors for a moment. We'll come back to those. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, my question's again about fourteen point two point two, Binar. May I ask through you, Madam Mayor, if the CEO can find out for us what the actual specifications for runoff are for a basketball court to satisfy a wobble? Because, yeah, exactly. I've just been searching online and I can't find any. So I'd like to know what they actually are. Is that possible to obtain that?
Through the chair, we have two staff here at the back. Are you aware of what the formal runoff provisions are, Mr. Moore?
I probably will take that on notice and come back. But I think Tyrone from BWA did refer to a two-meter distance between courts. And that's probably the best information I can provide for you tonight, but we'll follow up with some more detail.
That's true, but when he was asked, he couldn't explain where the two meters came from.
Have you got a second question?
Yeah. My next question is, are our Midland, Swan Active Midland basketball courts on site?
Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a good question. No. As sort of described by Mr. Vlahov, is essentially a risk assessment is done. And as I understand it, staff from Basketball WA came out on site along with ourselves and obviously Binar staff. And they look at all the risks. And in summary, the key difference is when you go to a professional level of competition, the risks are elevated compared to a non-competition level. And therefore, the requirements and the specifications for things like runoff distances become greater. That's my understanding of it, but certainly there are standards that are factored into that risk assessment. And certainly as part of taking on notice, Counsel Johnson, in addition to when did the requirements change, we'll provide some further information on what are the requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Further question?
I'll let another councillor go.
Thank you, Counsel, sorry, that was Counsel Hall next.
Thank you. Just on fourteen point two point two, and not taking away from any of the great work that Binar Futures provide. My question is, is not the, or was not the responsibility to be WABL compliant a matter for Binar and not for the city staff?
Mr. Bishop.
When we entered into the agreement, it was always under the understanding that they would be using the facility as is, essentially how it was before the refurbishment. There was never any intent to do extra courts or to move the walls out or to create extra space. I think the honest answer is they probably suspected it was compliant and we did too. There was no reason to believe it wouldn't up to that point, based on previous wobble competitions there. The devil is often in the details. Once we've gone through the detailed license application with BWA and the risk assessment, that's when it's really, I think, come to lie. Ultimately, it was their decision whether to enter into the arrangement. It was never our intention to ensure a facility that meets wobble requirements because that's not our core business. Our core business is actually what they've been doing for the last year, which is the local club competition with all the community and youth development benefits. But we did acknowledge, and when we presented this to council, we did express the view that having a wobble team in the east metro area was a benefit to our community as a pathway.
Thank you. Yeah, further question. So technically, are they not now in breach of that agreement, considering clause D on the agreement, which is that they were to successfully obtain a wobble license from Basketball WA?
Through you, Madam Mayor, no, because obviously what they're proposing to do to meet that requirement is to relocate only the competition park to Swan Active Beachborough and operate on courts that would be deemed compliant.
Okay, so effectively, we are now proposing that there'd be an expansion of this agreement to cover two Swan Active sites and the purchase of a shot clock.
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes. So to continue their current club program that they run at Swan Active Midland, to run only the wobble games, the competition games at Swan Active Beachborough during that season, April to September. And in addition to that would be the purchase of the shot clock to enable that to occur.
Counselors, just as a note, we have a special council meeting at seven thirty. So I'm going to give the opportunity to councillors who haven't had a chance to ask a question tonight. And we may not get to everyone's questions at this stage. So Counsel Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. So as not to hold the meeting up. Item fourteen point one point two, staff referred to minor amendments. I see that as more significant. So I'll be putting up a motion to alter some of the proposals. And under fourteen point two point one, the Swan Valley Drive planning strategy, which I'm wholly unhappy with, have discussions with staff today and we'll be adding a further recommendation.
Okay. Counselors, are there any further questions? Counsel Bowman.
And Madam Mayor, with all due respect, we're here to do a gender briefing and if we have to come back, I believe we'll have to come back because I haven't got questions that I've put in answered to my satisfaction. So, Madam-
We may come back after the special council meeting if we need to.
It's not what you just said previously, so I want to clarify that. Madam Mayor, my question's now on fourteen point one point two. And counsel, as you would have seen, my questions that I've submitted there. One of my questions was why the thirty-six days? So it wasn't spelt out in the report. That was another thing that changed from sixty to thirty-six. And I noticed the response was, well, it was the Planning and Development Scheme regulations. How does that meet the Supreme Court or the High Court challenges? Where we can't restrict political expression, but now we're trying to restrict it by putting thirty-six days?
I'll ask Dr. McCrae if you're able to assist. Thank you, Ms. Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Bowman, it makes sense to align the policy with the deemed provisions. It then becomes entirely a matter for the city as to whether it enforces those days. But it certainly allows the city in a situation where maybe we've got difficulties with certain signage and we're not getting the appropriate response from the person who's put the signage up to respond, remove it. It allows us to do that.
Second question then, the policy, is that just for local government election signs or is it for state and federal election signs?
It's for all.
So my next question then, I think we all know timelines for local government elections and local government election, there is nothing in the timeline that's for thirty-six days. Forty-two or thirty-seven is the close of nominations, which would normally be a normal process. But what does, what does they talk about in the state election? And I'm looking at anyone that's probably ran for state election before, they probably know it. But isn't it something about the issue of the writ? And when do they issue the writ? How many days beforehand? Can you guys remember?
We might need to take that one on notice.
So then, Madam Mayor, through you. So am I correct that we can have a policy, but if I think you're restricting my political speech, which may be a sign on there saying, vote for Ian Johnson or Rod Henderson, that there's actually a policy, you can't do anything because the High Court decisions say you can't restrict?
Ms. Hodges.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I don't believe that's correct, Counsel Bowman. The High Court basically held that there's an implied freedom of speech. There's not an express freedom of speech within the Australian Constitution. And as you pointed out, the WA Liberal Party and Armidale case, Judge Martin upheld those principles. But it doesn't mean that, you know, someone's got to challenge it. But it doesn't mean that the city can't, through its policy, ensure that the erection of election signage is done in a way that's safe. For example, not allowing star pickets, because we all know star pickets can be injurious to a person's body, not creating a traffic hazard.
Follow-up question. Obviously, there's been a bit of a selection on the erection of election signage, where we restrict one being the time, being now thirty-six days, one being the size of up to five meters square, which I know is quite significantly bigger than most other local governments. How can we put those in a policy? Yet the question I had, and everyone commented on West Swan Road, it was absolutely disgusting, all puts a signpost in that. How can we not restrict then election signage in the Swan Valley area, which is a major tourism? But we can restrict the number of days you can put it out and restrict the size?
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. We can restrict election signage in the Swan Valley Planning Act area. It's just the same as in any of the districts within the city of Swan.
So, Madam Mayor, not to take up too much time, but perhaps the management governors may want to review the response that got given to me on a question, which said- review the response that got given to me on a question, which said, no, they can't. Now I'm hearing I can, so if I was to move a, if I was to move an amendment, because we restrict to thirty six days and because we restrict to five square metres, I can restrict to West Swan Road? And that would be permitted then?
No, I think then you probably would be in a situation that the High Court would have recommend that you stay away from. You are then starting to, to really fetter an individual's political freedoms.
But when other local governments reduce the size to point seven five or one point five, that's not restricting their political freedom because they've got a sign that no one can see?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It is all, all, our policy, the intention of the policy is to, yes, allow people to have erectilec signage. I mean, it's allowed for within the regulations. But our obligation also is the health and safety and wellbeing of the community of Swan, the people that drive through Son, et cetera. And I think all local governments will approach it in different ways. As we saw when we actually had a look at, for example, the sizing of, the size of the signage that we allow. As you rightly point out, some local governments' signage is so much smaller. That's entirely up to council to make those calls. If they wish to make it signage smaller, then council can move those amendments. And likewise, the rationale behind reducing the number of days was to bring it into alignment with the regulations.
So just another follow-up question on that. Because the Swan Valley is beautiful at springtime, when election signs go up, everyone's having a nice look around when they're driving and all that. If we consider it to be a, a serious distraction to those visitors that come to the Swan Valley because there's election signs, that would be good enough reason to actually include that in our policy to restrict it? Is, is, is that what I heard?
No, councillor Bowman, that's, that's not what I was saying.
And I have a question from deputy mayor.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, could we, we seem to change this policy every two years, just before an election. Could we save some money by not doing that? I don't, is it really necessary to staff, for staff to involve themselves in this way in, in elections? I don't understand the need for any of the changes.
Ms Hodges?
Could you answer, maybe the CEO can answer that one. He's responsible for the agenda.
Thank you. And the rationale behind the review is all policy related to the cycle of elections is reviewed prior to the conduct of cycle election. That also allows us to take into effect any changes imposed by the government on the, the conduct of elections. If the state, as the minister has indicated, goes to a four-year term, I think this would come back every four years. But it would be open to council too, to remove, to move a, a review that says change the review frequency to four years.
So we could leave it unchanged and change it in four years' time? So I guess the question is, has the state government got some new regulation regarding the duration of, of elections, this thirty six day rule? Is that something that's come from the state government?
Through you, Madam Mayor, it is in the regulations. And essentially it's saying that you don't have to apply for, you don't have to put in a development application for signage if it's for electoral purposes and the duration is no longer than thirty six days or it's within thirty six days of the date of the election.
So this, this changes to save councillors from having to put in development applications for their, for their election sites? So that's a good one. Now, the next one is, has there been sudden, some sudden change at the state government level in the safety of star pickets? Can I still go and buy star pickets at Bunnings?
Mr CEO.
Thank you. And there has been changes in legislation, our obligations of the Work Health and Safety Act, which now provides and makes the CEO directly responsible for all work, health and safety aspects, including your own safety. So in terms of taking, undertaking risk assessment and preventing certain types of materials being embedded, the same reason as a council member recently asked me to look at a situation where a rate payer had put star picks in a location where people were driving over. Another council member approached me tonight, said I have an issue from a rate payer whose, whose residents are putting star pickets out the front of their premises and impeding equestrian action. So in removing those things which represented a risk to you, to members of the public and for the general safety of commuters, pedestrians along the road, that's one reason why star pickets are not allowed. If a vehicle or a person hits a wooden post, it's likely to break the post. But if they hit a star picket at speed, it's likely to embed itself in them.
So what you're saying is, you as a CEO, you are responsible for safety everywhere in the local government area of the city of Swan. Is that correct?
So I'm responsible for the general work, health and safety of employees and members of the public where they act, public access, so if they come into a facility such as the Swan Active site mentioned tonight. I don't, I have an overarching responsibility to assure, ensure that other state statutes, such as main roads restriction, Road Traffic Act, et cetera, are in place. So yes, I have a very broad responsibility for community welfare and safety. I can't stop every silly action or person from doing silly things, but I can try and make the environment as safe as possible.
Exactly. So there are, there are limits on, on what you're intending to do. And Bunnings is still selling star pickets, so they can't be that dangerous.
Okay. Thank you, deputy mayor. In the interest of a special council meeting that starts in five minutes, I'm going to bring this meeting to a close. And we're going to close this meeting at, just one moment, sorry.
I rule against-
Just one moment, councillor Bowman, just go back there for a second.
I go against your ruling. I have asked the question, I don't want the meeting closed, I'm happy for it to have adjourned. Maybe it was wrong use of wording, but this is why I clarified it before.
My suggestion is you adjourn it in order to-
Thank you.
Special council meeting, Madam Mayor.
No.
And then return to the question time thereafter.
Thank you. So thank you, councillor Bowman, happy to adjourn the meeting and we will continue after the special council meeting. So at this point, we will break. Until-
Be back in three minutes.
Three minutes.